All right, coming up with the meeting for five thirty? Matt the Fletch?
Matthew Buckley, Michelle Kaiser, Mike Wannesworth, Hannah Kuntzky, Liz Chetel, Lait, Erin O'Neil, Susan Salsar, Angela Devera, or Russell Sealy. My name is two minutes late.
Thank you.
And this here?
The egg bits are. Two point one, review and approval of board agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda as amended and or amended at the meeting? Motion, Mike, second. Michelle, all favor? Opposed. Motion carries. Three four one, we're going to enter to exec session upon the most of motions. Can I get a motion to adjourn to exec session for the negotiations pursuant to the Taylor Law and Bubba that GLTA Union plus legal counsel? Can I have a motion, please? Mike, Becca, John, all favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries, six zero. Welcome back. Can I get a motion to resume the business meeting, please? Motion, Mike, second. John, all favor? Opposed. Motion carries, seven zero. Four point one, minutes of January twenty fourth, twenty two. Can I get a motion to accept the minutes of January twenty fourth, twenty twenty two in business meeting at the end of the day? Can I get a motion, please? Aaron, second fanning, all favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries, seven zero. Speaker's presentation.
All right, superintendent's report. The elementary school cafeteria renovation continues on its march forward. The bids are in. We will be awarding the contracts within the next two weeks, so board members be on the lookout for an added board meeting so that we can award the contracts. That we did discuss this in facilities. And we had several more companies bid this year than we have in the past, and we attribute that directly to the new construction managers that we have over the project. So we're very excited. The elementary school cafeteria will be renovated over the summer and should be ready and set for students in the fall. Looking ahead, the parent teacher conferences that were scheduled for this Thursday are now March fifteenth. The GLTA basketball game is rescheduled from March third to March twenty fourth. The teachers had not been practicing and are now beginning to practice. They are hoping to feed the eighth graders. Just a COVID update, the number of district cases. We have zero current cases in district. The historical number is a hundred and forty cases so far this school year. That is twenty three point two five percent of our total population. The New York Department of Health percentage positive yesterday is four point six percent. The seven day average is three point eight percent. As the board members in many of our community know, the rule for in district functions being in person is seven and a half percent. So all of our functions that we are currently planning and working on and holding are allowed to be in person. We're very excited to be back under that seven and a half percent threshold. The CDC COVID rate, I was very pleasantly surprised today when I looked that up because I haven't seen it not high in years, it feels like. But the CDC COVID counting rate is five point one six percent, which is moderate. So there's high, substantial, and then moderate. So we're actually in the yellow, and that's a huge improvement. As board members know, the CDC rate is based solely on PCR tests or NAT tests. It doesn't include the RAPIDS, whereas the New York Department of Health percentage rates include the RAPID test, and that's why there's the discrepancy between the two. But it's great to see that PCR number also down. As many community members and staff members and parents know, we published a letter that we've been working on for quite a while to the governor and to Dr. Bassett, the state health commissioner, that I will read at this time regarding the state COVID protocols. Dear Governor Hochul and Dr. Bassett, the past two years have been unlike any other in history for educators and for students. Schools have adapted weekly, sometimes daily, to the ever changing guidance and mandates related to the pandemic. The entire way of doing business has changed. Our staff worked within the guidance and alongside the local health department every step of the way until January. At that time, it was decided that schools were on their own when it came to identifying and notifying first contacts, overseeing quarantining, school exclusion, and much more. Again, districts took that on with few questions asked. There is little doubt to any district's commitment to in person learning and student health and safety. We believe strongly that we have now reached the time where the state needs to transition schools out from a pandemic learning environment. The major outstanding concern is the ongoing mandatory universal masking. For educators, parents, and students, there is an urgent need to know the plan moving forward regarding masking in schools. It is time for parent choice when it comes to masking. If the state is unwilling to immediately allow for parent choice, it is imperative to provide reasonable achievable metrics based on regional positivity rates for when masking rules will be changed for all individuals in the school setting. By releasing a detailed plan with measurable benefits for masking expectations, it will help sustain acceptance of rules while they remain necessary. These metrics should apply to all individuals, vaccinated or not, as vaccination does not prevent someone from contracting or spreading the virus. The benefit of mask wearing no longer outweighs the potential negative effect of mask wearing on children's social and emotional development. The second request is regarding contact tracing. We believe the time has come to end contact tracing in schools and on school buses. It is time to return to the pre-pandemic rule of stay at home when you're sick, come to school when you're not. With the recent bowing out of the process by the health department, it has been left up to schools to try to determine if someone is a contact. School officials are not health professionals. They do not have the authority, nor should they be making decisions regarding quarantining. It is time to end contact tracing in the school setting. The last procedure we believe needing updating is the required weekly testing for non-vaccinated individuals. The most recent variant proved that being vaccinated and even boosted does not prevent an individual from contracting COVID-19. Testing only individuals who are not vaccinated or boosted seems outdated and does not reflect the current science. The evolution of understanding how to effectively combat COVID-19 has been continuous, and we all recognize the need for changes in strategies and policies based upon current circumstances. We respectfully request that the state bring an end to school-based contact tracing, revisit the mandate for weekly testing, and most importantly, discontinue universal masking. And it's signed by me, the superintendent of schools, and Matthew Buckley, on behalf of the entire Board of Education. So aside from that, I sent out an email and a phone message yesterday. If any community members or any parents would like tests, they are available. We have an abundance of them. So there is a survey that went out. If for some reason you didn't get the survey, you can just email me or email Mary Di Pietro, and we will arrange for over the counter tests to be delivered or picked up by community members or families. We do encourage people to test their children before returning, and staff to test prior to returning from February break. The facilities committee, and we started talking about this in January, has been reviewing the facilities needs of the schools, the infrastructure of the buildings, and reviewing and have put together a capital project proposal that we will be putting up for the community's vote in May. The goal of this project includes roof replacement at both the elementary and the middle school, removing and replacement of the water control panel at the middle school, remove and replace the water tank at the middle school, replace all the floor tiles in the hallways, classrooms, and cafeteria at the middle school. At the elementary school, improve drainage at the Elm Street third grade entrance. Outside the elevator at the elementary school, fix the flooring. Middle school locker rooms, getting a renovation, turning most of the shower area into storage. The middle school, our fourth and fifth grade wing elevator needs updating, insulating the pipes at the middle school, doing a bathroom remodel of the sixth through eighth grade bathrooms, and then renovating the technology office. All of this is proposed to be done using the reserve for the capital project, so that if approved, there would be no additional cost to taxpayers. Questions from the board so far and anything? Principal reports. Mrs. Connolly?
Good evening. At the elementary school, our students have been very excited and have enjoyed celebrating the hundredth day of school, which was last Friday, and yesterday's Valentine's Day holiday. Teachers capitalized on the students' enthusiasm by linking lots of learning activities to these themes. Lessons observed included math activities about creating ten sets of ten, skip counting to a hundred, sorting and graphing sets of objects, reading lots of hundredth day and Valentine's Day books, followed by the writings of cards and stories like First Grade Adventures of the Bush Monster. It was great to see such excitement throughout the entire building. And on that note, upon our return from the president's week break, we'll be kicking off our One Book on School reading of the world according to Humphrey. Posters announcing this have been hung all over the school, and students have been abuzz about the upcoming adventures they'll be experiencing with our main character is a cute little hamster named Humphrey, and he's a class pet. Look for upcoming posts, pictures to our Facebook page showing homeschool connections and lots of interdisciplinary curricular activities that we have planned for all next month. And lastly, while we are having so much fun, we are always working and planning in order to continually develop and grow our understanding of our students' strengths and target areas for small group and differentiated instruction to meet their needs. To that end, our data team met to begin to review and analyze our whole school fall and winter benchmark assessments. In our recent faculty meeting, teachers reviewed building level data reports from our iXL math and ELA student websites, and we also looked at all the drilled down information for class and individual students available in the analytics section of each teacher's account. And that's all that's been happening. Yes, thank you.
I do believe that the elementary school is also looking at potentially getting a pet that would match the book. That we are in discussions about that, what that might look like.
Hi, good evening. Here for some updates from the middle school. We too were wrapping up our One Book initiative. As you know, we had Charlie the Spaniard Redeman out at the end of January for presentations for all of our grade levels. It was very well received from our student body and our staff, and provided a nice jumping off point for the mid year to review our code of conduct, expectations for our kids, and then the other side of things, the positive decision making, anti-bullying, choosing kindness, the messages that'll carry us forward into the spring. We want to thank our PTA that did help support that initiative. Thank you to them, and to Mrs. Arafeld in the library that kind of coordinated everything here with her committee, and it closed out with a lunch bunch where students weren't able to meet virtually with their parents who weren't at the open phase yet where folks could be in person here. But that was a very nice event and good to see that our students were able to engage with their parents in that way. Warwick hosted their elective fair, and we were able to bring our eighth graders that are attending Warwick out to the school last week so that they could experience that. And Chester hosted a virtual parent night, reviewing electives and graduation requirements and things related to Chester High School. So please continue to move forward with both Warwick and Chester for our eighth graders. It felt a little bit normal having our kids in their caps and gowns, starting to think about graduation, and having our yearbook pictures here last week. And I know that our staff and students are all looking forward to a well-deserved week off coming up here with the winter break. They've all been working very hard to get there. Our winter sports are closing out this week. March twenty first will be opening day for modified spring sports. We are kicking March off with the traditional Ashokin trip is coming up on March seventh, eighth, and ninth. I know the students and staff are very, very excited to get up there and attend, and it's really neat to see our staff finding ways to continue with so many traditional events despite some of the protocols that, you know, can provide obstacles to that. So I know that our kids and staff are really, really looking forward to that event. The market counters, the spring musical coming up, March eighteenth and nineteenth. Our staff and students, Mr. Pignotaro here leading the charge, are working hard daily getting ready for that. And I have a couple save the dates that are coming out. These are events that had some issues scheduling because of the COVID protocols but are very important to our kids, staff, and community. On March twenty fourth, the staff and student fundraiser basketball game will take place, and the much anticipated semifinal for our seventh and eighth graders, we are looking at the May twentieth. And I'll be sharing those dates out with our staff and students here this week, but wanted to get that to you as a save the date. That is all I have here from the middle school. Thank you.
So Mr. Buckley just reminded me that also happening this month, we had some, we had emergency drills to do for our buildings last week. As a part of those drills, we had individuals from the Oregon Police Department, Greenwood Lake Police Department, and the Orange County Sheriff's Office, as well as the regional safety coordinator from northern West Chester, Bosse's. And they observed the full lockdown drill, gave us lots of feedback, and are part of our ongoing team of, as a resource and individuals that we work with on a consistent basis. So we thanked them for their time and their energy last week and for caring so much about the students of Greenwood Lake and having safety as a priority. Budget presentation. So the budget committee met last week. The budget committee met last week and began discussions. We've been having ongoing discussions here in district about what the budget for twenty two, twenty three will look like. So I have an initial discussion presentation for you this evening, and we have a budget to get any feedback that you have currently on our, kind of our path, to be our guide post as we continue this process. And then we will have a budget workshop in a few weeks where we really kind of will get into the weeds a little bit. But just to go through with you and the enrollment staffing update, preliminary thoughts regarding staffing for next year, and then assistant superintendent Erin O'Neil will review the tax levy limit compliance. So looking at our student enrollment, in K through eight, there are four hundred and eighty-six total students. You'll see that four hundred and forty of them are served here in district, eleven are out of district, twelve attend private schools, and we have twenty-three students that are homeschooled. At our high schools, there are two hundred and seventy-one total students, two hundred and six attend Warwick, thirty three percent, thirty-three attend Chester, fifteen out of district, eight private school, and nine homeschooled. The total number of resident students is seven hundred and fifty-seven. That's K through twelve. The K eight student enrollment over the past eight years is represented here on this graph. We do have a declining enrollment, but it has evened out in the last year or so, so we're hoping that stays steady or even increases. There are a lot of families who are moving into district or extra.
Busy.
That has been quite busy. A lot of preschoolers moving in, so that's good because that means they'll be ours in a few years. K twelve student enrollment looks similar with a decline over the last eight years, but hopefully maintain steady or going up. Staffing at the elementary school, you'll see, this is a summary we share each year during budget season. We have thirteen elementary teachers, one Spanish teacher, two RTI teachers, physical education, point six art, and point six music that is shared with the middle school. Project Lead the Way teacher, a library teacher, five teaching assistants, two teacher aides, and three recess aides. Middle school looks similar with three recess aides. There are seven teaching assistants assigned up here, two RTI. In seventh and eighth grade, we have one teacher teaching science to both grade levels, one teacher teaching social studies to both grade levels for ELA and math. We have a teacher for seventh grade and a teacher for eighth grade in either of the second areas. Project Lead the Way, we have one full-time teacher, and then there is another point two or point four that's not up here. Spanish, there are two teachers, one assigned to grades four through six, and one assigned to grades seven and eight. We have one library media specialist, two physical education teachers, a full-time art teacher and a point four, a full-time music teacher and an eight point four. We have a LEAP teacher. LEAP stands for Learning and Richmond's Activities Program. Mr. Huggins teaches that program currently, and he was supposed to do a presentation tonight but could not attend at the last minute. He's been out of school, and so we will have him present next month on his program and what he's been doing this year with the students. I think he'll be very impressed. He did offer to let me do the presentation for him, but I thought it important that you hear directly from him and can hear the expression and the passion that he has for the role. And then there are thirteen elementary teachers. Elementary teachers go up through sixth grade. One place where the PPS department has seen incredible growth in the last few years is in our English language learning population. You'll see that since two thousand, in two thousand and fifteen, sixteen, we had two students. We are currently up to seventeen students. So looking at a projection for next year, we believe that all seventeen of those students will still be. We don't think any of them will graduate out of the English Language Learning Program. However, that number will likely increase again, as it has, to, because of incoming kindergartners or new registrants. And so there is a possibility, even with just the seventeen, that we are going to need additional ESOL support, and I will talk a little bit about that, or ELL, ESOL, interchangeable acronyms, that we will be reassigning one of our staff members to cover that, those needs. Special education students. These are students that have an IEP or have a 504. Five oh four are not considered special education, but they do have accommodations. So there are thirty-one students within our K eight district, sixty-five have, thirty-one five oh four students, sixty-five have IEPs, and then ten students are out of district or hometown. And we also included our high school members. This chart shows the special education enrollment for this current year, and how many students out of district, in district, and then it also shows the teachers. In general, you'll see that we have about one more teacher than we do grade levels. That's because there's usually a teacher assigned to each grade level to do the co-teaching or the inclusion, and then there's one teacher that does the special classes. The only exception to that is at the elementary school where one teacher does the co-teaching for two grade levels. Second grade has its own, third grade has its own. This slide shows the continuum of services for special education. You'll see the full range of services up here at the top. There are students that only need related services, that would be things like speech, occupational therapy, OTPT. Then the, it goes from least restrictive to most restrictive environment. So the next would be consultant teacher, then there would be a resource room where the students leave and go out for a class, then there's consultant teacher and resource room, integrated co-teach, that's a classroom with two teachers in the room, a special class, again, that's partial day with or without related services, then there's special class all day, and then there's a skill support. You'll see that there is a range of each of these for each of the grade levels, and it is very much dependent on student need. So the student's IEP drives the program. This slide usually has a question. Were there any questions? In terms of staffing in the special education department, there are ten special education teacher, one OT, and there's a point five that's contracted as well. Speech, we have a point six, as well as one full-time. We have two school psychologists, one placed at each building, two nurses, one placed at each building. There are seven TAs and one aide. Note, though, that that is not in addition to what was on that earlier slide. Those are combined. One ELL teacher that works between both buildings and two guidance counselors one assigned to each building. When we start thinking about budget, one of the things we do is we look at things that were added in this school year, reduced from this school year that had been planned, or things that we planned for that just didn't go use, but we don't, we didn't reduce it because we may need it in the future. We had a social studies textbook adoption. We had to add nursing healthcare provider for a student. We adopted the school front software to assist us with our human resources needs. We continued to hire and contract with a human resources consultant to work on our human resources department and I think we had an audit done in two thousand, January two thousand and twenty, and had a lot of recommendations in it, and so the consultant is a retired HR assistant superintendent from Long Island, and she's been here helping us tremendously. We have an additional custodian, which we're using some of our COVID funding for. That's to keep up with all the cleaning and the, that is required and needed because of due COVID, and we did have to add a teaching assistant due to student need. Unused items, we did not use the wrestling coach, which was unfulfilled due to lack of interest. There was also a lack of interest in cheerleading this year, so we did not have a cheerleading team, and we had one elementary teacher that left us in November and is out through June, and we did not fill that position. Questions from the board about any of those? You should, you should be familiar. None of those should be known to you. Looking ahead at next year, programmatic changes, not everything has a budget impact, but just some things that we're thinking about. We're looking at adding a digital literacy course. We want to get back to our social emotional learning program. Prior to COVID, we had worked a whole year within our staff, and then we're getting ready to also work on that with the students and adopt a program, so we're looking at potentially doing that for this fall or sometime over the next school year. ESGI is a K one assessment, and that's the data that Mrs. Connolly was referring to earlier, where teachers are assessing, they put the data into their system, and then it gives the data visually back to the teachers so they can use it to inform instruction. The ELL teacher or ESOL teacher has requested Rosetta Stone to assist students with their English language acquisition. The seventh and eighth grade ELA teachers have requested some additional classroom libraries. CPI training is. It's training for students whose behavior is a little bit outside of the norm that may need additional supports, and so we do that training every two years. This year and next year, we'll be doing that training and continuing. Why am I?
Crisis prevention.
Crisis prevention, actually. Thank you. You're a complete blank there. Clubs, we're looking to add Odyssey of the Mind. That's something else that we've been talking about many years in a row here on the board, and again, due to COVID and not wanting to be a first time during a COVID year, have the first year be virtual, we had put that off. So we already had one team, but we So we already had one team, but we would really like to have two teams next year, both up here at the middle school and then potentially the following year add a team at the elementary school as well. And that's because it's split. And Mr. Kamar did a presentation earlier this school year on Odyssey of the Mind. And then budgeting for materials and supplies. The middle school library would like some iPads. And in kindergarten and first grade, they traditionally had iPads. It's time to replace them, and we met with the teachers. They really want to switch over to Chromebooks. Was an interesting development because they wanted the iPads a few years ago. But they, I think the new Chromebooks are interactive, the screen is touchable, so it has the benefits of both. Questions about any of those? Okay, so thoughts on class size? So I always preface this as, this is the Greenwood Lake ideal. If you go to other districts, you would probably not see numbers that look like this. This is kind of our goal or kind of our thought process when we think about the number of students that should be in each grade level type of classrooms. When we think about kindergarten through second grade, we think about eighteen students. Grades three through five, twenty students, and in grade six through grade twenty-two students. So when we look and try to decide for next year on how many teachers we're going to need, how many homerooms we're going to need in each grade level, these are the numbers that I don't like. So just a little background first. This is this current school year. This is our grade levels. This is the number of students in each grade level and the number of homerooms that we have assigned in each grade level. If you look ahead for twenty-two, twenty-three, you'll see that this year's first grade now go down to they'll be next year's second graders. This year's fourth graders become next year's fifth graders, et cetera. You'll see the kindergarten number is in italics because that's always a guess and it'll be within a few, but we won't really know until the fall when we start. So if you take the total number of students in that grade level and you apply the desirable class size for each of those grade levels and you do a little bit of division, you get a number with a decimal point. And that tells you kind of how many teachers you would need if you wanted that exact class size. Now obviously you can't have two point one teachers or two point three teachers, right? So in general, what you do is if it's a point five or higher, you round up. If it's lower than point five, you round down. So what would that actually look like? It would look like this, two teachers in kindergarten, two in first, two in second. Third grade, we're looking at two to three teachers. The current second grade class were kindergartners when COVID hit, and they seem to be the grade level that really was most significantly impacted in terms of their academics. They left in the spring, right when kindergarten is really ready to take off and start reading. So we are addressing some needs there in second grade. We've been working with the second grade teachers, but we are still working on whether we need two or three teachers in third grade next year, depending on need, depending on their performance. Fourth grade would be three teachers. Fifth grade, two teachers, and then three teachers in each of sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. So then the last thing that you look at is what does that actually look like in terms of class size? So again, this is the desirable class size, but when you divide by this number of teachers, what does that actually look like? So this column tells you how many students will be in each classroom. In kindergarten, if there's twenty-one students in a room, you would also have a teaching assistant in the room to assist the teachers and help the students. Twenty-one in first grade, seventeen to eighteen in second grade. Depending on whether you have two or three teachers, there would be fourteen students per room or twenty to twenty-one. Sixteen to seventeen students, twenty-two students, seventeen to eighteen students, twenty-two to twenty-three students. And then our next year's eighth grade class is a smaller class with fourteen to fifteen students. So that's how we decide again how many elementary teachers we would need for next year. At the elementary level, we're looking at potentially combining the Project Lead the Way position with a digital literacy position. We do have some retirements happening. So what we're looking at is combining two of those retirees' positions into one new position. This new position would teach Project Lead the Way to the kindergarten, first, second, and third grade students. But they would also then take on some of what the librarian would typically do, and that would be the digital literacy standards that are coming out. Digital citizenship, internet searches, computational skills, keyboard, et cetera. So that would be, we have two retirees, we go down to one position there. Do you have any thoughts on that initially? In terms of instructional staffing for twenty-two, twenty-three, this is what we're looking at. So we had that teaching assistant that was not in last year's budget, but I talked about earlier, that was added this year due to student need. We're looking at keeping that position. So if you look at budget to budget, it is a plus one, but it was already added into this budget. So the actual, there's a zero, but if you compare what was budgeted last year to this year's budget, it would be a plus one. But it's really just keeping, so we're not adding anybody. Again, we have several retirements, so we're looking at reducing two elementary education certified positions. Does not eliminate, there's no one losing their job. Just to be very clear, the board has been very focused in their efforts to not eliminate positions and to only eliminate positions for attrition. There is a full-time teacher aide that is retiring, so we would reduce that position. And then another possible point five to one point oh elementary certified position. Again, it depends on numbers, it depends on like the current second grade, going into third grade, and other, you know, if we have way more kindergartners, we might need a third kindergarten class, those types of things. Then again, as I said earlier, our English language learner student numbers are going up tremendously. So our current elementary Spanish teacher, we would look, she is elementary certified and under the elementary certification area and tenure area, we would look to change her from a one point oh elementary teacher to a point five elementary teacher, point five T-SOL teacher. And that would be able to then address the needs of all of our ELL students we're looking at, unless there's a huge influx. Questions on those? I know the Budget Committee is familiar with all of this. Those of you that are not on the Budget Committee, this is new tonight to you. Again, we can dive into it more in the workshop, but if you have questions now, I'm certainly happy to speak about them. In terms of organizational staffing, kind of the behind the scenes, the business office and human resources, there is a retirement in the business office. So we're looking to capitalize on that a bit as well as address some needs that we have specific to human resources. So we'd like to combine the payroll and purchasing slash accounts payable into one position. And then ultimately reduce and eliminate the HR consultant because she was brought in here to help give us, kind of set the boat right and then let us reallocate that position for those assignments. So with that, we'd be looking to create our human resources benefit. In food services, right now we have a, to oversee food services, we have one person that is here one day a week. We have them through what's called a BOSIS coaster. So he actually works in three different districts, but he's only here one day a week. And that causes some internal, you know, only having, you know, the boss or the person charging right here one day a week causes some confusion, some things don't get done, meetings need to happen one week apart. So we're looking to address that. There is a retirement within food services that will help us be able to address that. And we are looking to eliminate that BOSIS coaster. So between the retirement and eliminating the BOSIS coaster, we would look at creating a full-time position to oversee the food services department. They would take on the role of some of those. Then we're also looking at creating a position of, over data analytics PD and school personnel. They would likely work under the Director of Curriculum Instruction, do some data-driven analysis for programs and professional development, and provide professional development on some of the software programs that they oversee. They would also still be reporting, responsible for all state reporting as well as the data privacy ed law two D requirement unslash unfended mandate from this state. Thoughts on them? Okay? Over the course of the year, the Board of Education has noted some things they would like to see included in the budget for next year. So those are listed here. We got word that you guys, and you guys have mentioned that you would like to include the Hallmark trips in the budget, not just the two field trips per grade level. So we are looking at trying to add those into the budget. The Odyssey of the Mind, as we spoke about. Athletics came up to provide sports uniforms for home and away for all kids every year that they would be able to keep at the end of the season. And then on the schedule for replacement, there is a bus, one bus on the replacement schedule for this year. And then as well as the blacktop lines and the elementary playground repainting of the lines. We are looking at including that in the budget as well. Any changes to that or any shifts from the board in terms of the direction of, just to try and include that in the budget? Other development considerations, health insurance. They are looking at the Orange Ulster Health Plan to switch from a two-tier system to a three-tier system. So right now, when you enroll in health insurance, you either enroll as a single individual or full family coverage. In order to manage that and have a better application of funds and payments from people, they are looking at adding a mid-level two-person. So it'd be single, two-person, and family coverage. So they are looking to introduce that for next year. The rate increase to district for the health insurance has been very steady at zero, I believe, for two years in a row now. Yes?
Two percent, the prior year.
Prior year than zero percent?
Yes.
They did that specifically for COVID. This coming year, they're looking at increasing, seven percent increase rate to district. So that is something we have to consider as we work on the budget. The cooperative transportation agreement for out-of-district students with quality bus, that is actually through a BOSIS coaster. And they have notified BOSIS that they will not be renewing their agreement, and they want BOSIS to go up to bid. So they will be going out to bid, and whoever is the lowest bidder will get that, but that likely means another increase to the cost of transportation in that coaster for us. Finally, there are, is a rate increase and a rate decrease at the state level in terms of the teacher retirement system and the employee retirement system. Teacher retirement system is increasing from nine point eight to ten point two nine, and the ERS rate is decreasing from fourteen four to eleven four. And again, none of these are definite, yet these are just things that we have to consider as we develop the budget. Questions on any of those?
Is there any concerns in the transportation? That that's a big development, that they're not going to do the coaster and it's got to go out to bid? Driver shortage, are we looking to, are we expecting larger increases?
Yes.
Like really big?
I think they're thinking at least seven percent. Is that the number you gave me today?
Yes, between five and seven.
Are we able to absorb any of those runs back into the district? Is that going to be a possibility?
We try to keep as many runs within the district as we can and just becomes a function to, you know, to go out to the coaster, and it is cost savings to go to the coaster. But if it's possible to bring some into district, we absolutely would.
I'm curious to see when that's all settled, what the savings is to the district after a larger increase is.
Agreed.
Of course, finding drivers is very difficult, but still want to see what the savings really are.
As always, we always ask our teachers, kind of, you know, their wish list, not just teachers, but also other departments, other staff members throughout the entire district. They sometimes, they come to us with programmatic ideas, such as what I shared a few slides ago, that that would actually be included in the budget. And then they say, you know, sometimes they say, oh, I need a new easel for my classroom, or I need new carpets for my room, or the field striping machine works, but we really could use a new one. So typically at the end of the year, we purchase those one-time things. So the, we're still in discussions with various departments as to their needs, but as of right now, the proposed end-of-year purchases total sixty-one thousand dollars. And include the following items, classroom books, cards, graphing calculators, window shades to the elementary school, some items to the transportation office, et cetera. Lee, if you want to write to me, you're welcome to.
Sorry, I have to.
No, that's fine. If you want to write me an email, you can.
Thank you.
Yeah. Questions on any of your? All right, Anne, do you want to quickly go over the tax levy limit?
Since two thousand thirteen, the state has imposed a property tax levy limit which restricts the amount school districts can increase property taxes to the lower of two percent or the rate of inflation. Current rate of inflation is about six percent, so we're capped at two percent. We also have a tax base growth factor of point oh three nine. Together, they equal about two point four percent. If the Board of Education wants to exceed the tax cap, we would have to go out and gain approval of sixty percent of the vote. The calculation of the tax cap starts with the prior year's tax levy, increased by the rate of inflation, brings us to the tax levy limit of seventeen million, three hundred and sixty-five thousand, four hundred and seventy-nine thousand. Then we have a carryover from not levying to the limit in prior years of two hundred and sixty-one thousand, one hundred and fifteen dollars, which brings us to a maximum allowable tax levy increase of three point nine percent or seventeen million, six hundred and twenty-six thousand, five hundred and ninety-four dollars for a total allowable increase of six hundred and sixty-nine thousand, two hundred and fifty-eight dollars. Now that won't be decided now, that'll be decided as we progress through the budget process.
So this is a document that we have to file as a requirement from the state. We have to file it at this time, if the state, this is our limit. And then over the course of the budget development, we decide what the final potential increase would be. Questions?
I'd just like to say publicly that there's always a large number. That is just what's allowed, that's not the board's intent to raise taxes like that. I just always like to say that over here.
So next steps from here, we have a budget workshop, then another board meeting on March fourteenth, followed by the committee meeting, one more workshop, and then hopefully the final budget evaluation. Forward to the board's continued input and again, acting as our guidepost as we go through this budget process.
Okay, moving along. Now soon.
Now soon. I'll start with NISBA. The biggest thing going on with NISBA is they were invited to meet with the governor along with Super Tennis Association, BTSA, and some other stakeholders. And what came out of that meeting from NISBA's point is advocating for clarity and consistency of the requirements and stressing that we are not, we are about education and not about health issues, and we need to say on the education side of things. That's NISBA, and then I can move on to OCSB, which is gearing up for the Legislature Day and talking with our legislators. And their agenda is actually, they've tried to step away from the COVID issues for a lot of it, and they are back to prioritizing funding and issues with tax cap formula, addressing broadband issues that have come out over COVID inconsistency. And issues with the tax cap formula, addressing broadband issues that have come out over COVID inconsistencies and those issues. And just some other education things that are not related to COVID. COVID is always out there and is always being discussed with the legislators, so they really wanted to focus on some more important issues in returning back to normal with education. Matt and I are both attending some of the legislative conferences with the different key people. That's it, you all get to Chester, too?
Yeah.
Okay. Chester board meeting was last week. They are giving out test kits again this week, they've given out twice already. And again, just all school districts seem to have the theme of, you know, if you could, like if you travel, please test your children. That was Chester's message. March eighteenth and April eighteenth are now days off. They approved next year's school calendar, and they also approved a senior trip for seniors to Pershing Park.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Warwick is also getting out test kits, if anyone needs them, send the email over to the high school. You can also receive them here at River Lake, as Sarah mentioned before, any of River Lake students. Students at Warwick High School are in the process of finalizing their schedules and courses for next year, so if they, you know, it's obviously they have a discussion with their child about what classes that they would be interested in taking next year and reach out to any of guidance counselors if they have any questions about that. On a very positive note, one of our own students has been given the honor of receiving the superintendent spotlight over at Warwick Valley High School. His honor goes to senior Stephanie Summer. Stephanie is a Greenwood Lake resident, she is captain of the swim team, she is an honor student. She's been recognized for all of her hard work, not only academically and on the swim team, but also for fundraising efforts and her work with the Girl Scouts. So congratulations, Stephanie, we're all very proud of you.
Thank you, Patty. I think we pretty much covered facilities and budget in this meeting. Does anybody have anything on policy?
Just like we said last time, we got the eight thousand, nine hundreds, nine thousands of policy from NISBA, so we're almost done with all our board's meetings. We'll meet that, we'll get over, make our edits, and hopefully we can.
PTSA, Colleen.
Hi. So the PTSA recently started a newsletter, our first one went out last month, the next one will come out in March, so keep an eye out for that. Thank you, Mary, for always sending everything out for us. We were happy to help with the One Book One School program, the middle school just finished the restart, and the kids really enjoyed it. You know, they were excited and were talking about it. I know Diane said that elementary school is going to be starting soon, that's always fun. Am I not loud enough?
We just wrapped up a virtual cupcake contest for the students, the kids created a cupcake they love for Valentine's Day. We had twenty kids participate, they all did an amazing job, and I think winners are going to be announced tomorrow. The book fair is going to come back this year. The elementary school will be March fourteenth through the eighteenth, and the middle school will be March twenty-first through the twenty-fifth. Last year, we did the Carousel Cake fundraiser, that was really successful, we're going to bring that back. It will start March eleventh, and delivery will be April sixth. And the Spiritware link is on our Facebook page. And just keep an eye on the Facebook page for any new letters coming out.
I'm going to keep you on the spot there.
Huh? Oh, I was over in River Lake. Bad nothing for you. And we'll say the National Junior, oh, the winter carnival is coming up, President's Day weekend, Friday through Sunday. And the National Junior Honor Society, I know helped us to clean up at the community center, which was really desperately needed, so that was greatly appreciated.
Simply to the floor, would anybody like to address the board?
I'm Jessica Niziano, I have two children in the district, an eighth grader, and my older daughter is going, is a sophomore in high school. I'm just here to say thank you to the board for the letter that you wrote to the governor. I think I am one hundred percent behind everything that you wrote in that. It honestly brought me to tears today because I am just rooting for these kids, and I think that the masks need to come off now. I wish there was something that we could do more, and I'm hoping more of the community would be here and stand behind us, and I think it's really important. So I just want to say thank you and give my support. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Well, I just wanted to mention that we're going to be holding kindergarten registration March sixteenth, seventeenth.
Teresa, does have a microphone.
I've got such a big mouth. We'll be holding kindergarten registration March sixteenth, seventeenth, and eighteenth here at the middle school. It'll be from nine to eleven and one to two on those three days. On the sixteenth, we'll be having an evening registration from five thirty to seven thirty. I'll be sending out packets to everybody that I know of, I've gotten some mail from little buddies and from some families that have already called. But if anybody would like, you know, packets to email home to them, they can just give me a call.
That's it, anyone else? Okay, moving on, seven point three. Four member nominations for Bosse's and the Canada Club, Bill Boss, Edwin Nestrada, and David Eaton. Have a motion, cast one vote to nominate William Boss, Edwin Nestrada, and David Eaton for the three open seats on the OU Bosse's board has presented, please. Motion, please.
Motion.
John, second, two, any discussion? All in favor? opposed. Motion carries seven zero. Financial reports. Have a motion to approve the financial reports for January twenty twenty-two as presented at this meeting, please. Motion, please. Two, second, Mike, any discussion? All in favor? opposed. Motion carries seven zero. Adopt twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three student calendar. Have a motion to adopt the twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three student calendar, please. Motion, please. Second, Mike, any discussion? All in favor? opposed. Motion carries seven zero. Approve SOWAC District and GLAA. Have a motion to approve the SOWAC between District and the GLAA as presented at this meeting, please. Motion, please. Mike, second, John, any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries seven zero. Eight point four, approve construction management agreement with Seven Engineering. Have a motion to approve the construction management agreement with Seven Engineering as presented, please. Two, second, John, any discussion? All in favor?
Actually, I just wanted to say what amazing work that they've done in the basement already, and how pleased we are of the facilities committee that it's gone this well.
Motion, I mean, all in favor? Opposed. Motion carries seven zero. Execute health services agreement with Pine Forest GSD. Have a motion to execute the health service agreement with Pine Forest GSD as presented, please. Two, second. Mike, all, any discussion? All in favor? Opposed, motion carries seven zero. Designation of office dispositories being changed. Have a motion to change the official dispositories as presented. Aaron, second, two, any discussion? All in favor? Opposed, motion carries seven zero. Approve appropriation from TRS Reserve. Have a motion to approve the appropriation from the TRS Reserve as presented, please. Motion. John, second, Mike, any discussion? All in favor? Mike, opposed. Motion carries seven zero. Approve purchase of John Deere snowbricks. Have a motion to approve the purchase, the purchase of a John Deere snow brush as presented, please. Patty, second, two, any discussion? All in favor? Opposed, motion carries seven zero. Approve submission of real property tax cap compliance form. Have a motion to approve the submission of the real property tax cap compliance form, please. Motion. Two, second, Mike, any discussion? All in favor? Opposed. Motion carries seven zero. Approve extension of leave replacement appointment Ryan. Have a motion to extend the leave replacement appointment of Kara Ryan as presented, please. Motion, John, second, Mike, any discussion? All in favor? Opposed. Motion carries seven zero. Appoint screen coach, coaches. Have a motion to appoint screen coaches for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two GLTA contract agreement. Have a motion, please. Aaron, second, Patty, any discussion? All in favor? Opposed, motion carries seven zero. Appoint substitute bus driver Concepcion Delatorre. Have a motion to appoint Nina Concepcion Delatorre as a substitute bus driver as presented, please. Motion. Mike, second, two, any discussion? All in favor? Opposed, motion carries seven zero. Accept recommendations from CSE and CPSE meetings. Have a motion to accept the CSE and CPSE recommendations as presented at this meeting, please. Motion, two, second, Mike, any discussion? All in favor? Opposed. Motion carries seven zero. We're going to enter, have a motion to enter to effective session for the negotiations pursuant to the Taylor Law and waiver to GLTA. Have a motion, two. Second, two, any discussion on it? All in favor? Opposed, motion carries seven zero. No action to be taken during this time. Thank you.